Well, I mean, I shouldn't say this out loud, but crumble cookies are better than swig cookies, so. You'll just have to start getting swig drinks.
Right.
Okay.
But I'll tell you what, I mean, it's getting right there.
Are we ready, Mike, and we can start?
A password has to be sixteen, and with all kinds of.
Give you a second. Oh, I need to.
You know, and then it has to be reasoned.
Okay. We're ready, and, uh, I guess I need to get a prayer and a pledge, so. So, Rob, would you do the prayer and Jared, you do the pledge? Okay.
I forgot here.
I guess I'm in the seat today.
Well, let's get her going.
Okay.
Hey.
Yeah, we gotta get, we're gonna be done quickly, right?
Discussing any riffraff stuff?
Okay, we'd like to welcome you to our Planning Commission meeting today on June twenty eighth. Uh, this meeting is being recorded. We will start with Commissioner Callis, uh, giving up opening prayer, and then Commissioner Marchbanks leading us in the pledge.
Our father, you have your bow heads before we, as we, uh, start this Planning Commission meeting on this beautiful summer day. We're thankful for the opportunity we have together to consider, discuss, and to, um, pass on items that might be a benefit to the city and the residents of our community. We're so thankful to live in Linden and for the benefits that it provides to us and our families. We pray for all citizens of our city that, and business people who commerce here, that they might understand and respect and enjoy the benefits of Linden City. We ask you to be with us this day, that we might have like spirit with us, be those that aren't here, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Let all please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll, uh, start our meeting with an audible roll call. Sharon Call has been excused. Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Rob Callis.
Here.
Steve Johnson, here. Scott Thompson is excused. Uh, Jared Showers.
Here.
And Renee Tribe may be joining us later. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our Planning Commission meeting on June fourteenth. The commissioners have received those minutes in advance and have had a chance to review them. The commissioners have received those minutes in advance and have had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Excuse me.
I did not see.
We can't hear anything.
And I will make a motion to approve if there isn't unless somebody else saw something.
We have, we have a motion to approve the minutes? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried unanimously. Okay, uh, the next item on our agenda is a time for public comment. This is a time for anybody that's here and would wish to, uh, address the commission with, uh, an item that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for that purpose? Okay, we'll move on. Perfect. Our next item is item number four. It's a site plan approval for a swig at two ninety-six North State Street. Um, the, uh, applicant is Kofi Adu.
What was that, what was that address, Steve?
Two ninety-six North State Street.
Okay, got it.
Got it? Um, and this is in the general commercial plan, and our presenting staff is Mary Barnes.
Kofi's online. We have swig representatives. This lady's right here. So we have swig representatives, but, um, Kofi and Pranavi are the, the architects, engineers for this project, so I'm gonna try.
Why don't we have the two swig representatives come and sit up front in case we have questions for them, and we'll see if we can get the technical difficulties.
I guess that's just a recorder, I don't know.
I'm gonna get them to exit and then re-enter the meeting and see if that, see if that works. All right, can you guys hear us now? All right, well, we'll just.
Yeah, we can probably answer any question.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll message them soon. Anyways, all right, I'll just continue. So this item concerns site plan approval of building B. I'll come down to the. You can see it here. So building B of the previous City Park Retail development, this overall development. Um, this is specifically the swig building. The other two buildings of the City Park Retail, they were approved on November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Um, this building, unlike the others, will be a primarily vehicle-focused building with two drive-throughs, a walk-up window, and the inside of the building will be for employees only. We saw this type of building, um, just recently with the Walmart fueling stations. If you remember, it was like a kiosk with no customers, um, allowed to actually enter the building. So similar to that plan, there's, there's a few requested changes in regards to the design of the building because, um, of, you know, it's vehicle-oriented instead of the more pedestrian customer-oriented. So going into the site development standards, as you can see, let me pull up the parking plan. Here it is. Um, there are six parking spaces total that have been provided for this building. Although our parking code does require one parking space per hundred square foot, um, for eating and drinking establishments, um, it also states that the planning director and the city engineer can reduce the parking requirement when they, um, to avoid unnecessary or excessive parking. So they have done that here because there are no customers entering the building. Um, there will be at, like, max three employees at a time, so three of those parking spaces are for employees. And then there'll be three spaces for customers that want to walk up to the building and aren't walking in from State Street or, like, the neighboring park. Um, so one of these spots is an ADA spot, making it compliant with ADA regulations, and those are those orange parking spots right there. With the landscaping, um, oh yeah, sorry, let me talk about access really quick. There are two access points, um, one from two hundred north and one from State Street. That State Street one is due to a cross-access agreement. Um, the shared access agreement, tag and go on this, on the final plat, this has also been approved, as you know. All setback, street lighting height, fence requirements have been met with the previous City Park Retail, um, approval, including that forty-foot setback from a residential zone and the seven-foot masonry fence bordering any residential zones. So with the landscaping. I'll get to the, here's the landscaping plan. An amended site plan with a reduced landscape, landscaping strip was approved in January of this year, January twenty-two. Um, you guys probably remember, just refresh memories. Um, UDOT mandated City Park Retail to widen the shoulder to, um, to provide stacking for the car wash just in case. Um, that was done right before, like, all the entitlements were finished, therefore they came back for amended site plan approval, and, and this was approved, a, a reduced landscape strip. While they still meet the overall open space, landscaped open space requirements of the site, they, um, you did approve this reduced landscaping strip, so the landscaping strip for the swig is only fourteen feet.
But they do make up for it in other areas.
Yeah.
They're deeper than that.
Like, up here in this corner. And like I said, it does meet the overall landscaping open space requirements. All right, I'm gonna pull up the site plan. Here it is. There is a small section. As you can see, it says landscape, so this small section will also be landscaped, um, possibly a few benches or, like, chairs or something for the people who come up to the walk-up window. So staff has requested a landscaping plan for this small section of the site, um, and the applicant. They may have further details on what specifically will go into this landscape area that they can talk about later or now or whenever. So before I start into the design standards, I want to reiterate that this is one of those different types of buildings. It's not a pedestrian customer-centered, so there are some modifications that will be needed. Um, so the design standards, they ask for a significant amount of the ground story, um, to be transparent glazing, sixty percent fenestration at the pedestrian level. Um, however, with this type of building enforcing that amount of transparent glazing is not feasible for obvious reasons, like we went over with the Walmart gas station. Privacy for the employees is important. No one wants to see a bunch of storage and supplies. Um, so there are small, three small vertical windows, as you can see, here, here, and here, to lighten light for the employees, um, but they still preserve the privacy of the employees. And then this walk-up window and the drive-through window down here also add to the fenestration of this building. So it will need that modification for the design standards. There is a canopy over the employee entrance, the walk-up window and the drive-through window. The facade has been broken up every fifteen to twenty-five feet with architectural details such as windows, canopies, or the roof variation right here. And, um, this building will have a flat roof, and the required parapet and corners designs have been provided. And the walk-up window has the required projecting sill and transom, so.
So just, just so I can order you, that would be the west. Is this, is this the west-facing west, right?
Yeah, so this is facing State Street. Yeah, and this is facing the Beans and Brews or, like, the City Park.
Yeah, be the south.
Yeah, so the south, uh-huh. So this is the side that people will be lining up to order.
So if you walk up, walk up window, are you having to cross the doors, a lineup of cars somehow?
Yes, that is, so that's how it is for the Beans and Brews. That's just to the south as well. It's kind of an interesting lot with the setback requirements from residential and then needing to have a street-facing facade. That works for customers. Um, they... So they have this walkway, it'll be like hatched walkway across the drive-through area, and then people can walk up to here, to this window.
I'm guessing people are gonna start to park on the side of State Street.
Luckily.
They see a big line of, a lot of, a lot of cars, maybe they think they can get it quicker by walking up, which is fine to park on State Street, I suppose, but it encourages that, I think.
Well, luckily, there's a much bigger shoulder there now. It's probably good forethought from UDOT.
The state, is State Street gonna allow parking there, or is that, uh, an access lane to the car wash?
Yeah, they don't, they don't allow parking there. Um, on State Street, they don't allow parking. People park anyways, and not just for soda shops, they'll park for, you know, like, the shave ice stands and that kind of thing. Um, just kind of happens, but technically, because it's a state highway, not supposed to permanently park, but, I mean, swig is pretty fast when they give you their drink, so.
But isn't that the overflow lane for the car wash in case it?
Technically, so UDOT didn't name it that, but that's what we're guessing it was for. They just said, according to our calculations, you will need a larger lane, a larger shoulder, sorry, not lane. Right there.
Sorry, keep picking up, but so if you're putting parks in here, is there hard surface to get to this? This is a hard surface here then?
Yeah, so that's a hard surface, and like I said, they'll be like, like landscaping, like, it's not gonna be just ugly, flat, concrete. They, we talked right before the meeting, they'll be putting something, like, some type of street furniture and landscaping in there to make it a little more inviting to the people who are walking up from this parking lot. And there's that ADA ramp right there, so that, you know, ADA complaint with that as well. Any more questions or?
Well, I assume with the park right across the street, they'll get a substantial amount of people walking from the park.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And you've accommodated for that, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so there's, there's this, um, can, it's, it's a little faded because this isn't the site plan for building A or building C, but you can see there's a, there's a walkway to, you know, for pedestrian circulation, so it starts here, and you'd walk up here, and it'll be hatched for pedestrians. Can you see that? It's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or State Street.
Yeah, and then, yeah, there's that State Street one, so people from the park can get there, and people from State Street can get there. Two accesses for pedestrians. All right.
They may have substantial foot traffic because of the park, huh? That's good. Cars stay over at the park.
Yeah, makes it a good location, I think. So the final design thing that I wanted to bring up is the material breakdown. So I listed in the staff report the material breakdowns for specifically the street-facing facade, which is this west elevation with the walk-up window, but I want to talk about the overall material breakdown, which is about the same as the street-facing facade. So, um, the materials on the entire building equal about thirty percent primary materials and sixty percent secondary materials, and that breakdown is, there's about forty percent stucco, and then, let me see, about, yeah, twenty-four percent of this cement-simulated wood siding. Um, and then thirty-six point three percent of the stone sill, the split-face, um, block, and the, like, storefront windows, that's your primary. So technically, the secondary is about sixty percent, then the primary's thirty percent, and, or forty percent, I guess. And then it's meant, it should technically be flipped, where, uh, where the primary is sixty percent and the secondary is the forty percent. However, um, that's, I mean, the cement siding, although it is a sec- secondary material, the, the hottie board, it looks like wood, and it does add that, you know, architectural detail and the interest and, to the building. So as the Planning Commission, you can modify that percentage requirement. Sure, you've done it in the past, but I can let the, if you have any questions, I can let the applicants talk about that. Um, the last thing I have to talk about is the floodplain, which you have all heard before with the previous developments.
Just a quick question. It appears from this view that that, uh, there's a metal, uh, overhang awning type thing?
Mm-hmm.
That's over the walk-up window?
Yes, uh-huh.
And what about over the drive-up window?
Yeah, so there's one there, too. It's required over every window or entrance.
There's one over the back, or the door.
Yeah, so this employee door has one as well.
Which door?
Employee door in the back.
Exactly. What's that thing, uh, I guess that's the?
That's the CO2, um, tank. It's a cabinet, a metal cabinet that the CO2 tanks are placed in.
In the middle there?
Um, on the.
Right below the red swig.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were talking about the.
Yeah, what's that dark?
That's a window.
Rectangle, oh, that's a window?
Yep. It's a small.
Oh, I see.
Window.
All right, I can, I'll just mention floodplain. Um, so this development is located in floodplain zone A, um, according to floodplain regulations. Oh, man. So according to floodplain regulations, um, buildings in flood zone A must have one foot freeboard above, um, base flood elevation, and so this building does meet that requirement, and that's shown in this plan. This was a part of the tag and go and the other buildings. There's that. And so the Planning Commission is the final land use authority on this site plan approval. So any other questions about anything?
With this operation, it's not required to have any kind of a grease interceptor or anything, is it?
It should. I, I think the other, the Beans and Brew does, but they typically do.
So is, is that planned?
Yes.
An exterior?
Yep.
Thousand gallon or something?
Yeah, um, whatever your city codes all will meet, yeah.
Any other questions? For Mary or the applicants? I guess my one question, Mary, is do we need to put in the motion the secondary, allowing the secondary materials, or is that?
Can you go to the conditions real quick?
Yeah. Here they are. So it does say the final exterior material design is approved and as proposed, and will meet the commercial design standards in all other aspects. Maybe they could add with?
I think that's, we wrote that.
Is that, is that to meet that? Okay, so that's what that meant, okay.
We wrote that condition, um.
In the motion?
In the mo-, yeah, with the, with the intent that you were.
We're approving what, what was talked about, but everything else needs to meet standards, okay. Well, this is not a public hearing, but we do have public here. Um, is there anything you'd wish to say about this for a second?
Yes, I'd do if I could.
If you could talk into the microphone so those online could hear, and state your name.
Uh, my name's Bardell Fox. Live at one sixty-five west, two hundred north. We're on the other side of the property, of the wall that's being built, and if we could get the map up there, I could, think I could explain what our concern is. We've, the concern is, if anyone has been by there, the, the walls are being built right now, the trench has been dug, the foundation has been put in, and now they're building the wall. On our side of the wall, on our side of the wall, on our property, uh, prior to the trench being drug, being dug for the wall, the, whoever working there, the contractor came in and, and pulled all of the topsoil off of the property, and they went over on our property quite a ways and pulled all of our topsoil off, 'cause there is a, there's a fence that runs there, but the fence and the property line aren't the same. And I, I didn't see that when it happened, but when I, but when I went out, I saw that all of the topsoil on our side of the wall had been removed, and I, uh, talked to the, whoever the builder there, and I s- I said, "You've kind of come over on our side quite a ways to remove topsoil that's not on the property." And he said, "Well, I haven't established the exact line where the wall would be built, so we're pulling all of the topsoil off." And he said, "When, uh, when the wall is built, we will re- restore your topsoil. We'll replace, anything we removed will take off." And so I think this table actually kind of demonstrates it. Prior to them removing it, this would be our side of the property, the topsoil just ran like this. They've come and drug all the topsoil off, and then they've dug the trench. So if all they do is backfill the, along the trench where the wall is, they're not, all of this topsoil's already been removed. We're asking if it can be in the specifications or a condition that our, we, we just want it restored to how it was before it was removed, and it was not growing anything, but it was t- uh, topsoil, and we would hope, oh, we're asking, can it look like it did before the wall was there? And, uh, the, the reason I bring this up is, the car, the, the, at the same time I, I asked about removing topsoil on our property, the wall behind the car wash had been built, but it had, had not been backfilled, and at that time I asked him, "What is your plan to do behind, on our side of the wall where it's been dug out?" And they, they did install a French drain on our side, which needed some kind of gravel in there, but on our side, they never did restore any of the topsoil at all, and I brought a sample of what was, what was brought in there, and if, I think if you were to show this to any gardener, any person, they would recognize that this isn't topsoil. And, um, we did, you know, on our side of the wall, I, I recognize some may need to be in there because there is a drain below, but the wall is not straight. It has different curves and bends in it, kind of, and wherever it wasn't straight, like, one area, there's almost like a fifteen-foot by twelve-foot area that was dug out on our side, and it was just replaced with this. Any bit of topsoil in there was never restored to our side. And kind of, all this topsoil is dug up, it's put in pile, and then it's, it's trucked away, and in our case, never to be seen again. So, and just so, and, um, another thing on our side of the wall behind the, uh, car wash, because it, our property slopes down towards the wall, there was lots of this brought, hauled in or dumped in there, and then they kind of made a berm up on the wall, so I didn't, I saw him backfilling, but I didn't go over there for a number of days, and when I went over, they had bermed up against the wall, and then had this come down about eight feet on our side, so all along our side of the property, we had lost eight feet of what was pasture because this was covering it all, and I did talk to. And I did talk to Mike on that and he called him and they came up and removed all of that off of our pasture. But then I had to spend two days actually shoveling it off of our pasture. So, I'm just asking if, where this new wall is going in, if we can have topsoil, the original topsoil or original topsoil or similar type brought back in.
Yeah, thank you.
This is what was, I think if you took that to anybody in Linden who gardens, they're gonna tell you that's not topsoil. And it was, to me, it was kind of rough that that whole area was dug out and, uh, no topsoil at all was ever brought back on it. And, and just to say, we did meet with Connor, who was a part owner in the car wash Monday, and we had a really good meeting with him. We were very- I think we're gonna give a bu- up a bunch and he's gonna come in and kind of try and remove some of this in that one area and help. You know, at that time, he agreed to give, plant five trees. So we're gonna do that, so we feel that was a very good, uh, meeting. So we're very, if he's listening, we're very appreciative for what he's wanting to do behind the other wall. So I'm just asking, can we get our top, some topsoil back on our side when the project, at whatever point, they go to do, do it?
Mike, can I ask you, have you had conversation with the contractor at all?
Uh, I, I have. We're, we're dealing with two different contractors, so-
So there's different contract on tag and go than is on?
On the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have had a discussion, um, and I'd be glad to reach out to him again.
Do, are we, are, th- these gentlemen have bonded, haven't they? Uh, that we don't release the bond till they've-
Yeah, but they didn't bond for this. And so, they, they, they just bonded for public improvements. But this is something that, you know, they need to make Mr. Fox whole and so-
Yeah, I mean, it's common courtesy to put back what you disturbed.
You know, so you could put, s- staff can review that before we issue any of the certificates of occupancy for any of the buildings.
You know, I, I, I think we need to do that just to ensure, cause maybe he's been a little bit too good of a neighbor to where maybe somebody would've, when they seen him trespassing on their property, might've pulled a cease and desist until they, there was a firm understanding. But I know, uh, Bardell and his wife real well, and they're not that kind of people, but doesn't mean anybody ought to take advantage of it.
But I think I'd rather just have you leave it with staff instead of making it a condition of approval and, you know, we'll, we'll expect that.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I remember talking about it prior to the thing and, and I think everybody thought that it would be left the way it was found and they should get their topsoil and it should be right graded properly and no certificate of occupancy shoved, in my opinion, should be issued until it's done.
You know, it makes sense that they put the aggregate in on top of the French drain, but they ought to put at least six or eight inches or whatever it needs to be, go there in topsoil so he can grow grass again up to the wall. Isn't that what we're-
We're gonna plant trees there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was our issue was, it just removed it from our ability to plant anything on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll, I'll reach out to the, uh, developer tomorrow and ask them to reach out to Mr. Fox and they can discuss that. And I'm sure the Swig folks will be glad to do that as well.
We, we have no issue with Swig at all. It's, we're only talking our side of the property.
Yeah, absolutely. That makes total sense.
Okay.
Thanks, Bardell.
Swig is a pad site in the development and so we really need to work with the overall developer on that.
And the overall site, not just this one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I'll be back again.
Let, let's hope not, but if so, we'll be happy to see you, Bardell.
Okay, thank you.
We just need to leave the motion as is, is your recommendation?
We'll work, we'll work that out.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Or from the applicants? Okay, hearing no other comment, um, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make that motion. I move to approve the applicant's request for site plan approval with the following conditions. One, the applicant will continue to work with the city engineer and make all final corrections to the engineering documents. Two, the plans will meet development specification as found in Linden City Development Manual. Three, final exterior material design is approved as proposed and will meet the commercial design standards for commercial sites and buildings in all other aspects. Or the applicant will comply with all body requirements applicable. And five, all items are staff approved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second it.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the voting was unanimous. We're looking forward to seeing the building go up.
Great.
Let me get to the next item here. I'm sorry. For some reason, these big pictures take a while to go by. Okay, our next item on the agenda. If I can get there. I'll look up here. It's item number five, the moderate income housing discussion, and we'll turn that over to Mike Florence.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, I'm gonna go through this quickly, cause I know Commissioner Johnson has to leave in a few minutes, um, but we can continue to talk about it if we, um, can, if we need to. Cause you're not making any decisions this evening. So, in twenty nineteen, the legislature passed Senate Bill thirty-four, which required municipalities to adopt three, uh, moderate income housing strategies to help with affordable housing. The five strategies the city adopted at that time are, are listed there in the bullet points, and I'm gonna go through those a little bit more in detail in a few minutes. And then during this twenty twenty-two Utah legislative session, they, they passed House Bill four sixty-two, which, uh, modified the language in a number of the strategies. Basically, they, um, are wanting more of an implementation and benchmarks for the cities to, um, put, put with the strategies. They, um, they changed number, they changed wording like, instead of, you know, uh, "Work on this," you know, it's now "Facilitate," you know? And, and so they, they've made more actionable strategies that cities have to look at. And so for the past two months, um, our general plan committee has looked at these, uh, these strategies, the twenty-four strategies adopted by the state. And, uh, they've recommended a number of strategies, uh, uh, for the planning commission and city council to, um, to consider. And so, we will need to update our, our moderate income housing plan element of the general plan before October first. We have to update that, um, plan with implementation strategies, benchmarks, updated, um, strategies. And so we're gonna spend our next couple meetings, uh, going through these in July and August, so the council can look at it in, in September. So, um, I'm gonna go to the second page. So the strateg- these are the twenty nineteen strategies that we adopted, and then you can see the new wording in twenty twenty-two. I also gave you a, uh, um, a presentation by the Utah League of Cities and Towns. They labeled a deep dive into House Bill four sixty-two, where they listed all twenty-four strategies that were adopted in twenty nineteen and then the new language in twenty twenty-two. And so, um, strategy one, the only thing they changed was to allow detached accessory dwellings also. Um, and so this, this strategy was can, was recommended to continue by the, or to continue to be adopted by the, uh, general plan committee. Now, we have to adopt at least three strategies. If we adopt two more, then we get, um, priority, we get moved up in a priority for, um, for transportation funds. And so, you know, y- somehow they're going to list those cities who have five strategies instead of three and pr- and they'll ha- they'll be on a higher priority. And so, strategy one, the, the general plan committee recommended the, the city continue that. I'm working with the state right now on, what does an implementation strategy look like? Cause we've already reduced our regulations, we've updated our, our accessory apartment ordinance every year for the last three years. We've reduced the requirements. So I'm working with the state right now to get some clarification on how do they want us to implement this further? Um, so that's strategy one, they like, uh, was recommended by the plank, uh, general plan committee. Strategy two was reduce impact fees related to no, to low and moderate income housing. So we've done that on one of them. We, we reduced the parks impact fee for accessory apartments. Their recommendation was to look at all of our, um, impact fees and see what, if those should be reduced further for, um, for affordable housing, not just for accessory apartments, but for any affordable housing. And so those are kind of the two kind of low hanging fruits for the city, cause we already-
Will they let us get away with that on strategy two?
Yeah, so we, it, what the new language says, reduce, waive or eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. So we could say, if you're gonna do moderate income housing, we're gonna waive certain fees. And so we-
We'd already done that, hadn't we?
We only do it for accessory apartments.
Yeah, but we, didn't we do that like a year ago?
Uh, quite a few years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. But-
So it can count, even though we did it a couple of years ago?
Yeah, but we, we need to now apply it to any moderate income housing. So, you know, not just accessory apartments.
I see.
So, well-
What is considered now, I mean, it's a moving target all the time, but what's considered a moderate income housing?
Yeah, so it's, it's housing, so I, I, I put this presentation together, let, and you guys can go through that. Um, so basically, here's how it's determined. It's determined off the area median income of Utah County. So the Utah area median income is seventy-seven thousand. Um, that's what we go off of, just, I just put Lyndon's in here, just so we have it. But eighty percent of the AMI for Utah County, so eighty percent of seventy-seven thousand is sixty-one thousand, six forty-five. So we need to basically, moderate income housing in Linden looks like someone making sixty-one thousand or less. And they don't spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. So they don't spend more than eighteen thousand a year on housing. That includes utilities and insurance. And so, a monthly housing cost, for example, would be approximately, that they could, that they could afford at eighty percent AMI would be, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. So, just using loan calculators, uh, from the different banks, that would be, uh, um... Sorry, I did not calculate that. Okay, yeah, I did. So, what you could afford, you know, this was interest rate a couple weeks ago, but what you could afford for a fifteen hundred dollar a month payment would be a home at three hundred and four thousand, approximately. This does not include utilities or insurance, though. So, and if you look, this is the, this is what was for sale a few weeks ago in Linden. The cheapest home in Linden a few weeks ago, there was one home at three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The next one was six eighteen, six twenty-five. If you look at rents, there was two homes in Linden, or two apartments for rent in Linden for fifteen hundred. This is just going off, um, utarerealestate.com. So there was, there's three rentals available in Linden right now. Now, this doesn't count, you know, someone may have their accessory apartment on some board someplace that we don't know about, or, um, KSL. This, this was just on Utah Real Estate. So, so I don't know if that answers your question, but that's-
Well, a single family building lot, house building lot in Linden, it's more than that.
Is three hundred thousand or more, yeah. And-
And rent is more than fifteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So how are we ever gonna meet that?
So that's what we have to do, those strategies. So one, by continuing to support accessory apartments, if a developer comes in and does some moderate income housing, we can look at reducing some of those impact fees. So that would be two strategies that, that we could work on. We, we have to, you know, we're, we're not developers. And so, um, and the legislature understands that, so, but we just have to be willing to work and support moderate income housing.
Well, but what I, I guess my point, and I'm, I'm just, the wheels are turning in my mind, what developer can build a moderate income housing in today's?
Well, he starts with a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar half acre lot.
Yeah, and-
Yeah.
And, uh-
Well, they're not gonna-
I don't know how you spin it, but I don't know how you get it down that low, so-
The, the state, um, they're giving, they have the Olene Walker Fund, and that, they put millions of dollars in that. So developers, if they're gonna do affordable housing, they can apply to that and get some tax credits and get some funding through that. Same with the federal government, they can get some tax credits too. So there's developers that do that, like Give Development, um, Cowboy Partners, those guys do affordable housing, they're good at getting grants and, and stuff from the federal government and the state. So they, so they, the money's out there if you, i- if you, if developers know how to, how to do that.
I guess, yeah, I guess what I'm wondering is, so staff feels like we have to do this.
Oh, yeah, it's mandated, we have to do it.
Well, mandated if you want the funds, right?
Yes.
So what you're saying is, we can't pass up on those funds, so we have to do it.
Mm-hmm. So, but-
I just don't know how you do it.
Well, we, we adopt the strategies and that's up to the developers to, you know, to come in at that point. So if we continue to allow, but even it, even if we continue to promote accessory apartments, that's one. I mean, we, once we have building a, building permits for, we've got two hundred. Those that we don't have building permits for, we probably have another two hundred.
Yeah.
And so we're, we're helping with that a lot. You know, if we looked at reducing impact fees, that could reduce the developers' costs as well, you know, if they didn't have to pay fifteen hundred dollars per unit, they didn't have to pay, uh, five hundred dollar public safety, you know, it adds up for them for, you know, a few thousand dollars per, per door.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the other, any other questions on eighty percent? Am I? And Jared, you're on the committee, so if I, if you have anything to add, ju- please jump in. This, the other strategy we currently have is, uh, pers- about utilizing strategies that preserve subsidized to low moderate income housing on a long-term basis and preserve existing moderate income housing. They changed that so you have to preserve existing and new moderate income. So what we had said with this, is these three homes right here by the pool, we own those, we rent those for a subsidized rent, uh, the, the senior housing or the, the housing for the disabled individuals by Hollow Park, we have a ninety-nine year lease on those. Those don't really count anymore, they're in the past. So this, we, we need to redo this strategy. The general plan committee recommended, um, not adopting this one again. And then the other one was, um, allow, the current strategy we adopted said allow for alternative housing types or moderate income residential development, commercial and mixed-use zones, commercial centers or employment centers. That was changed to more of an action word to zone or rezone, uh, for higher densities. Uh, this one was recommended that, by the committee that we look, um, at that. So the, these were the, the top four, um, uh, strategies that the committee recommended. Again, look at, um, accessory apartments, reduce impact fees, rezone or zone or rezone for higher density or moderate income residential development, commercial, mixed-use zones, uh, near ma- near major transit investment corridors, commercial centers or employment centers, reduce, waive or eliminate impact fees. And then these two were tied to rezone for densities to facilitate the production of moderate income den- housing. Now that one, we'd have to do some studying on, cause I, I don't know what that density would be that would create moderate income housing, but we can study that more. And then amend land use regulations to allow for higher density in new moderate income residential development, commercial or mixed-use zones near transit corridors. So, um, that's just a quick update on the general plan committee, what they recommended. We can talk about this again, um, next month, so. I don't know if you guys heard, these are the top ones from the committee. Any comments on those?
Well, I think my opinion is, go after the low hanging fruit.
Mm-hmm.
Your mic's off.
And really ER and L do that.
Yeah. You know, I, I saw, I had an opportunity to meet with the-
You know, I, I saw, I had an opportunity to meet with a guy in Albuquerque who's, their whole business is low income housing, tax credits. Lightech, I think is what the acronym is on that.
Yep.
And they have built the most fabulous apartment buildings. I mean, they are a cut above everything else in that city. And I think that that stuff that's down there by that BRT station, not the BRT, but the track station in Provo.
Yeah, that's.
The Itoe Todd Zone or whatever. I think that's light tech and that stuff is nice. And I think residents would be, they might change their opinion about some of that if they saw some of those projects. I mean, they are really nice. Uh, I also think. I think residents would be more apt to allow more density in certain zones if they were set aside for. Our seniors or disability. That was one of the options, Mike, but it said that we have to participate in developing that. I wouldn't be interested in participating. In developing that, but you know, you have so much of this not in my backyard type of thought, but if it's for seniors, which we need to house our seniors. Uh, I think that's, the citizens would be a lot more open to a higher density project with that, but. And that's why I have two fourplexes in Orem where we house fifty-five and older and they've gotta be certain income levels. And I've got really nice tenants in there, very nice buildings. So. I, I think taking care of the, the, the senior population and providing some affordable housing, I think is a good thing. They, this guy that was doing the, wasn't that what we were, uh, had allowed here on the corner by the community center?
Yeah.
And of course he's not doing that project now for whatever reason, but we've been open to that.
Yeah. And the, I think the, the main issue is though it, it has to be for moderate income housing. So. Um, like I, I talked, you remember the, the property we saw last time about the indoor sand volleyball? So now I think they lost, they went out of, they went, they're not in contract anymore on that property, I believe. And so Av, someone from either the Avalon or the other place, I can't remember the name of it, used to be Osman.
No.
You know, they asked about doing, maybe expanding onto that property today. And, you know, but they are, they're not interested in doing moderate income housing for seniors fifty-five and older. They, they want market rate. And so.
But Avalon, is it market rate or is it?
I think it is.
Oh.
When we approved that, I thought there was gonna be a percentage of it. It wasn't market rate, I thought.
I haven't read anything about that in the, but.
Well, that was one of the options of the strategies too, that we talked about, right? Is setting aside a few units in a project like that.
Mm-hmm.
That might be.
A little below market rate.
Yeah. So you could, what, one of those strategies. So, so one of those strategies is also, this wasn't one that the committee recommended, but you know, you could. It, you basically, you give them more density. So whatever they need to be able to accommodate the moderate income units. So if they need five additional units in order to, I, you know, have five that are below market rate. Then you give them a density of five and those are deed restricted. Um, and so. So those are, that's another way to, to be able to do that. So.
Thank you, Mike. I've gotta leave, so I think me leaving ends the meeting, cause we don't have a quorum anymore, so.
We, we can still have a discussion. They just can't take any actions, but I guess they need to close the meeting too, right?
I maybe we'll close the meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll be right behind you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
But you just wanted our opinion on some of these strategies.
Yes, so.
What do you need to be able to submit it to the state?
So yes, I, I, I need your recommendations on, I think we would like to do five strategies or, you know, the five. So that we can show the state, hey, we're not just doing the low hanging fruit. We're actually gonna do something. You know, maybe rezone or look at density or something. So. I'm gonna, let's, let's, since we've closed the meeting, um, let, let's stop the recording since we reco, you know, and then.
Okay. Can you stop it from there?
Yeah, do you wanna do the microphone? Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
See ya.